Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg, August 1st, 2022 town meeting. At this time, I'll ask you to please silence your cell phones in respect to the decorum of our meeting. Moving forward, I'll ask everyone now, please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you for being here. Couple announcements regarding future meetings. The National Night Out will occur tomorrow night, Tuesday, August 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in the Eugene Myers Community Park. The Parks Committee meeting will occur on Tuesday, August 16th, here in the town office at 7:30 PM. The Board of Appeals will meet on Monday, August 22nd at 7:00 PM. It is accessible, it is, you're able to attend here at the town office or attend via Zoom. The Citizens Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, August 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the town office. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, August 29th at 7:00 PM. You may attend in person at the town office here or via Zoom. The Town Council next meeting, our next meeting will occur on Monday, September 12th at 7:30 PM here at the town office, and one may also attend via Zoom. It's the second Monday in the month as a result of the holiday weekend, so we have an understanding of that. The last day to register to vote with Frederick County and the last day to file for election candidacy will occur on Friday, August 26th. The candidacy would be for Town Commission Office. So we go from there.
Mr. President, yes, I just wanted to point out that the Planning Commission actually will not be meeting on Monday, August 29th. There's no scheduled meeting for the month of August.
Okay, is there a need for one, sir, or it's just not happening?
Just, there's, there's no need for one, but I think we're back on track in September.
Very good. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, are there any other meetings, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Just for staff, Parks Committee would like to meet on Saturday, the 20th, so we can do a walkthrough of Memorial Park.
Okay.
Is that, is that something we gotta do, or we can do, or?
That should be fine. I'll make a note of it. Just August 20th is the Mount St. Mary's event in this park.
Yeah, it'll be nine o'clock in the morning. We're gonna do it early, get out of the way. All right, thanks.
Sort of a before and after.
I'm sorry, what time did you say? 9:00 AM?
Yeah, 9:00 AM.
Any other items related to future meetings? Hearing none will move forward. My hope is everyone had the opportunity to review the June 11th, 2022 town meeting minutes. Is there any modifications, anybody would like to see, or changes? Hearing none is a motion to accept the minutes as presented for the June 11th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. But motion carries four to zero to one. Commissioner Sweeney is abstaining as a result of his absence from the meeting. My apologies, sir. Move on. We now turn to the deputy for the police report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deputy Barlow, Frederick County Sheriff's Office, and this is the monthly report for July. I forgot to update the month up there, but this is for July. So we had a leave, we had one day of holiday, two days of sick and two days of training, and that was for our new handguns for a classroom and qualifications. We also have the police one training. Calls for service productivity. We handled 436 calls for service, which includes a total of three arrests, 175 direct patrols, 101 traffic stops, and 14 What's Important Now cards. Really no case numbers worth highlighting, but should we know that deputies have increased presence at the fire station due to the increased traffic there due to the drawings? That's all I have for the town report this month.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Sorry.
Any questions for the deputy? We'll need you again next week. It didn't work, so.
We'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, moving forward, return to the town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for June 2022. One thing I did want to note real quick, that during the National Night Out event, the road through the park will be closed to vehicle traffic, beginning probably about 5:45 till close. I'll highlight some of the key areas related to streets outside of the normal tasks. The staff trimmed some tree wells on East and West Main Street, installed two bump head signs on bump ahead signs on Irish Town Road, and they put farmers market banners up at the square. Related to the parks, they did their daily park checks, monthly park checks, mowed, trimmed, and we killed in the parks. And staff put crush run dirt seed and mulch along the new Blacktop Road in Memorial Park, and if anybody's been out there, it's been recently striped. So that project is complete. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still, at the end of June, was still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. The roughing filters backwash two times a day. DE filters are still getting two weeks runs. We have seen a change in the lake over the last month due to the lack of rain. However, I know we got a lot last week, but they're back to starting to see the effects of the lake water. The wells highlighted there are our well depths, water production and consumption produced an average of 232,622 gallons per day and consumed an average of 247,795 gallons per day. The amount of backwash water percentage is about 9.83% for June. You'll see the percentages of where the water came from. We purchased 426,900 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in June. For wastewater, we treated an average of 291,267 gallons per day and consumed 247,795 gallons. She meant 14.93% of the wastewater treated this month was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage, and we did not exceed the plant's design capacity at any time in June. We received approximately 3.3 inches of precipitation. The average is 3.7. We have a small surplus of 0.85 inches over the last six months. The trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of August. A couple of the meetings I attended in June, I did attend the MML Summer Conference. And then noteworthy items, we had a misutility locate at the North Seaton Avenue where the blinking light is for the accident. We're still working with State Highway on responsibility on having that light repaired. Staff dug up and replaced a curb box on Mountain View Road, repaired a water leak on Emmett House, on the Emmett House Service Line. Staff mowed, trimmed, and we killed around 507 East Main Street. Staff conducted the June quarterly water meter readings. Then the staff at the water wastewater plant conducted, completed all the yearly maintenance in the Headworks Building, changed the oil in the bar screen grit conveyor and the grit pump. The contractor completed the vibration analysis at the pump station. And in June, there was a fire on Waynesboro Pike Heavy Pool and our hydrants, which caused a spike up to 890 gallons per minute. We did not have any discarded water complaints as a result, and that's my report for the month of June.
Just two quick ones, since our meeting in September's pushed back, there will not be trash on Labor Day, correct? Just so we're all aware.
Correct.
Okay, and then the, just as a reminder slash question, water and sewers due Friday, correct?
Water and sewer bills are due Friday. Late notices will be put in the mail on Monday, the 8th.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager regarding her report? Just one item, not really a question, but a comment. I was made aware that there needs to be attention to the community garden walking areas, like where the mulches outside of the garden beds as they've become overgrown. So perhaps staff could take a look at that.
Within the fence area?
I believe so, yes.
I believe that's the responsibility of the garden plot renter.
For the mulch walking areas?
Or inside the fence area?
Right.
At individual plots. I'll check.
Okay, okay, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. And that's it for me. Anybody else? No? Okay. All right, thank you. We turn on to the grants administrators, grant administrator report.
Yeah, so again, this is something we're going to include each month for your knowledge on the status of our grants. Basically, I can highlight. We got word from MDE for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline, the project ranked number eight out of 43. So we ranked high enough to be considered for a loan. More than likely, we will also get some grant funding. I think I can forward the email to the mayor and then to the board. I think it's going to help a lot with the elected officials reaching out to our local delegates to help push the funding through. DePaul Street Water Line, the project ranked number nine on the state's ranking. And again, we're definitely considered for a loan. Grants are great. The Crimery Road Pump Station, the engineers are obtaining final approval on the major grading and building permits. Unfortunately, we did have some struggles with the Frederick County on the stormwater management. I think we're finally through that hurdle and we can continue moving forward. Unfortunately, due to rising costs, we will need additional 821,000 in funding. We're hoping to break ground in early 2023. The concession stand restroom community park, the engineer's currently working on a stormwater management plan, topographic work and permits, et cetera. We should have all that ready to go December 1, approximately 2022, or I mean, hoping to have it all ready by the 2023 ball field, baseball season. The advanced license plate readers, all equipment's been arrived in town. Installation is scheduled for approximately September 12th. And project should be completed by the end of September. And then we are finishing up our Public Works Equipment Grant from USDA. Hopefully, there'll be another round coming through, and then on page 13 is also a list of some of the other grants that we have right now. And I'm available in the shower, available if you have questions.
Any questions for staff, Mr. Ritz?
I don't have any questions. I just thank you for the detailed report. I know we started that last month, but this looks great. There's a little more detail so we can see where things, where we are.
I think it's helpful. I mean, like I said at last meeting, you know, the board approved the additional position, which is so vital to what we do here that we want to make sure you know what's going on.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff? A couple of quick items on page 14, the community park cornhole. I think it's $2,000 match. It looks like almost $2 match, just my situation there. Picnic tables being replaced in the pending grants, are these the wooden picnic tables in the pavilions we're talking about, or?
Where are you?
I'm sorry, I'm on page 14 at the bottom of the page. The last item, DNR Local Parks and Playgrounds Infrastructure Grant, and we're talking about replacing.
The picnic tables in both pavilions.
So the heavy wood table is going to be?
What are we, what are we looking to do, Matty?
Great, okay.
They have at least a 20-year life expectancy.
Awesome, okay, and I'll be forwarding something to staff, a grant opportunity that was brought to my attention from Visit Frederick for the repairs on the red trail. He said they have a source that might be able to accommodate us, so I think it's worth pursuing, and I'll send that to yourself. Okay, any other items for staff? No? Okay, all right, so we move on. We need to talk about the parking enforcement report at this time.
I don't, unless you have questions.
Not at this time. Anyone else know? Okay, town planners report, sir, returned to you.
Sure, this is for June. I'm also going to highlight to some key areas. Under Grants, Community Legacy, I finalized and submitted the Fiscal Year 23 Grant Application. I also submitted a reimbursement request for one project, and I completed the Fiscal Year 22 Award Quarterly Report. Chesapeake Bay Trust, I applied for $5,000 to continue the Rainbow Program. I attended a grant ceremony on the 24th in Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, in recognition of receiving the 121,400 award for the Silo Hill Basin retrofit project. I also created a press release and I sent that out. Community Development Block Grant, I processed the weekly payrolls and also a payment request. I continue to research for grants for sidewalk connection along South Seaton Avenue from Cedar Avenue to the edge of the town boundary. I spoke with MSHA for potential funding sources. MS4, the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin retrofit project. I obtained quotes to remove brush and trees from the exterior of the basin. I finalized the Frederick County Erosion and Sediment Control Permit. I worked on addressing MDE comments on our previous year permit report, which is due in October. Code enforcement and permitting, I processed seven zoning permit applications, eight backflow preventer permit applications, one sidewalk cafe permit. The code enforcement officer attended a court trial on the 21st regarding the A East Main Street property. We continued issuing citations to that property. We issued a total of 36. Frederick County Court on those, on that property, also 10 on a property on Fraley Road. And 22 municipal liens were filed against a property on East Main Street. I processed and filed 10 citations regarding another property on East Main Street for high grass and junk. Continue issuing citations to Fraley Road property. We continued training on the parking enforcement software, and we finalized that training. I met with the code enforcement officer and parking enforcement software trainers on the 14th. Responded, Amy and I responded to numerous incident reports, Planning Commission, various project management. 500 East Main Street Right Away Plat, I worked with the engineer and our attorney on finalizing the plat and deed to easement. Christ Community Church, we received and started processing traffic impact analysis, addition plat for stand delineation plan, preliminary forest conservation plan, and final forest conservation and site plan. Brookfield Parcel C, D, and E, I received and started processing their forced delineation, preliminary forest, and preliminary subdivision plan. I created a staff memo for the zoning text amendment application that we received. Miscellaneous, the new town sign project is completed, and I finalized the permits with the county. I met with the Sustainable Community Board on the 7th regarding the designation renewal application, and then I submitted that to the state. I met with DCNR on the 7th for the mandatory 2122 biannual forest review. And I also met with them again on the 16th for a project walkthrough. Let's see, Amy and I spray painted curbs on East and West Main Street on the 15th in preparation for Gonzaga Volunteer Paint Days. I oversaw those kids on six days. And I coordinated the 2022 pool business advertisements, and there are the updates as of June on the developments.
Any questions for the planner, Mr. Ritz?
Mr. Golden, the properties you listed there on East Main, the additional property on East Main, and then on Fraley Road regarding the high grass. I know we've been issuing a lot of citations. Is there any way town staff could address that, like they did with 507, and then just build back accordingly?
Yes, so Kathy is going to be presenting an ordinance at our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
With the recommendation of Commissioner Davis, how to settle these issues.
Getting ahead of myself there. All right, thank you. And then I did notice yesterday, I checked, the Emmett Ridge 2 property is listed right now at 499,000.
Yes.
So it's back on the market.
It's back on the market.
And then rudders late summer. Do we have a realistic timeframe it actually will open?
I do not at this time. Okay, they're just hitting, they're hitting snag after snag, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to have a, an update at our next meeting.
Thanks. Yep, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burns?
Just to follow up with Commissioner Ritz with, as far as the rudders update. I noticed it yesterday, and I had somebody else comment it to me today. There's a sale lease sign for rudders on the property.
Right.
Any idea what that's concerning or anything like that?
I have thoughts, but it's just my thoughts, so I can't comment on it.
Okay.
I don't know of anything in particular, though.
Okay. Just kind of unusual that they're building a building and then it's already for sale.
I don't, yeah, they're not going to sell the, the building itself, but.
It's more of the.
Land.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could you, could you repeat your comment?
He was just asking if there's, it was a realtor attached to it.
Oh, very good. Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for the planner regarding this item? No. Quick question regarding the Fraley Farm property that is now under contract. That's news in a way. Anything that can be shared regarding the meeting with the potential developer?
Yes, and I was going to bring this up. It was in my notes. The, at the advice of our town attorney and their developer and attorney, they would like to schedule a workshop with the Board of Commissioners and the mayor for October. They would like to wait till after the election and have a workshop, a working workshop essentially with the board to lay out the, their plan and get direction, what the board would like to see and how many homes they would be okay with, the status of the connector road, water and sewer, so that we can all then be on the same page and move forward. And that was the recommendation of the town attorneys, or town attorney and their attorney.
So the town attorney is on board with that type of a workshop with that much information being?
Absolutely.
Discussed, preceding their moving forward. Okay.
Yeah, and it would be open to the public. It would not be set in this kind of forum. There wouldn't be any public comment related to the project, but the public can certainly listen in. And it's more of a working meeting that ideas are shared on both sides so that they know what direction to go, and they don't want to bring you a project that the board absolutely will not accept, and then they have to go back to square one. So on their recommendation, a workshop, we were looking, we can set a date later on, but towards the middle to end of October.
Okay, and within the workshop, the board can discuss these items, but we can't make decisions on these items. We're just providing a framework of, I guess, ideals as opposed to concrete boundaries and?
Okay, and the workshop would be televised, like we do our meetings. Many municipalities do workshops in addition to their town council meetings or town board meetings.
Right.
It's not a direction that we've done before, but this is one of those projects that it's absolutely necessary.
Terrific, okay, thank you. Any questions for staff further on this, for the planners' report? Right, hearing none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we move on to Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Ritz.
Before I start, Mr. President, I just wanted to make sure, did you get the list of public, the sign up for public comment? We had some late.
I have not.
Late arrivals.
If I could get that. Thanks.
Sure, no problem.
Perfect. Okay, Mr. Ritz comments?
I'll just, I'll just keep it brief. I just wanted to thank our local media for coming to our meeting tonight, for everyone in attendance, and to our state senator for, for coming down to our meeting this evening. Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I just want to send our thoughts out to Deputy Aholt, who went through some surgery last week and came out really well. So we hope he has a speedy recovery and gets back to us soon.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I want to thank the whole town and all the residents and all the businesses and organizations for helping with, with the community here on each day. It went really, really well this year. The, it was one of our best years we've had for a long time with fundraising and donations. The town businesses and everything gave way above their normal amount they usually go. And with, with all the other businesses and stuff, we did really well this year. I also, if everybody just took notice to the veterans signs that are up, the new banners that are up. The last batch will be going up here shortly to fill in the rest of the streetlights that are open yet. We have none on North Seaton because we have to get permission to use the, sometime in the future, get permission to use the telephone poles for the banners. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burns?
Just quick, spent a lot of time at the town pool this year, and it's wonderful now that with all the lounge chairs and tables and umbrellas. It's made a big difference for people to be able to sit and relax while they're at the pool, and it's been a great turnout every time we've been there. There's been a ton of people, so a great use of the pool this year. Commence staff for, you know, doing those upgrades with the umbrellas and the chairs and stuff like that. I think it's made a major impact on, on the pool. Thanks.
Great, thank you, sir. This Saturday, there will be a youth mountain biking event on the trails. They're expecting in excess of 60 kids riding and an additional 20 parents riding. It begins at 8:00 AM and finishes at around noon. I've been working with the County Department of Public Works for safety items related to pedestrian crossings in the area and increased traffic. I want to invite all the commissioners to extend the invitation from the two teams that will be there. One team is from our own Frederick County, the other is from Adams County, our neighbors on the other side of the line, and it should be a fun morning. I'm doing my best to encourage both teams to come into town and visit and spend money, so hopefully we'll see a benefit from it from there as well. And that concludes my comments. Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, thank you very much. I had an usual meeting with a former classmate, Bob Malloy came up here from Washington DC. He's in the DC Hall of Fame. That's the big Hall of Fame for athletics. Calvin Hayes and Coach Fallon, he's the most winning high school football coach in the state of Maryland. Ended up at Good Counsel, and brought another player up. We're all played together. It's at a high school down there and lunched out in the restaurant outside of town, and it's owned by another classmate of us from there. But Bob Malloy, really, really a special person. We met with the president trainer. He had us over, and we had to, he put that up on our website. We had a Zoom conference meeting with the trout development. And if you have any questions, I'll just, we can jump back to the staff maybe for a quick overview, but it's just sort of fishing around with this, and we've asked them to submit something and not, not us. Go ahead and fish around and spend money to get it done, and if you may want to have some more questions on that. Let's see, Frederick Red's Q Mission came up there, Summer enrichment, a lady from our community sponsored buying pizza and 20 kids and counselors, pizza in the park, visual hose. Thank you, Commissioner Davis for bringing them down over there, and then they got the fire the hose and swim, and their theme this year is kindness, and they're, it's an outreach program down in Frederick that of the needy kids. And they just, they said this was the best day they had of all, all summer doing this, and it's very special. We met with, on Zoom, Kathy Willetts, town manager, myself, Conrad Weaver, who's been over to Ukraine four or five times with the mayor of Lutsk, Ukraine, Ihor Polishukh. And it was a wonderful meeting just to explore things, and I want to present that tonight about being a sister city to us. They're very excited. It's a town of, it's a city of 200,000 people, and it's got two universities, and I've got a letter of support from the, our university here and also from the Seaton Center. It's to make sure that we're, we're not, we're there in need, but also we have a lot of people here in need, so I want to assure that that's going that way. We'll bring that up later. Ribbon cutting ceremony at Sibyls Environmental School. If you don't know the history of that, they, they wanted to close down this little school up the mountain for years. And it was one of the last schools to ever get air conditioning, but it's one of the finest little schools with family values and a beautiful setting that pretty much hasn't changed for 200 years, and it was a wonderful thing, and the citizens really fought hard for that, and they got it. And it's, and their nickname is the honeybees. They're really into the environment. Terrific. It's just perfect place for that, and I think it'll draw students from all around the county. National Night Out tomorrow night, yeah, I have something to read on that. And at our last pool party, we had 215 people from the community. It was packed, and they had a lot of fun. We ran out of supplies. We'll try to do better. We provide food and, and drinks, and there is an ice cream truck, but there is plenty of ice cream. Next pool party is August 12th, 6 to 8. Congratulations to Frederick County for going to 100% on renewable energy. Congratulations to Frederick County for going to a hundred percent on renewable energy. That they, they're, they're second minis, group of government to do it behind us. And so we're, and with the costs, everything surging. We'll see where, how that plays out. But I think that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we now turn to public comments. We have with us from the Maryland State Senate, we have Paul Quarterman. Sir, we'll invite you up if you would. Is it red or no? Okay, press the circle, press the button, it'll turn red.
There we go.
And if you would, say your name. You don't need to give your address anymore, but if you want to say your hometown, that would be wrong.
I'm Paul Quarterman. I live in the city of Hickers Town. And just want to come down here to see, and I, I had the pleasure and the privilege to serve in the Maryland State Senate, representing District Two. And as you are all probably aware, with redistricting that has occurred here this year, District Two, which for the last ten years has been solely in Washington County, District Two has now expanded to the northern portion of Frederick County, picks up the town of Thurmont, obviously also picks up Emmitsburg. So wanted to come by and introduce myself. Some of we've been able to meet prior to this conversation, but wanted to formally introduce myself to the body and let it be known that we're here to help. You know, I understand municipal government. I started out, I ran for the Hickers Town City Council, was elected to City Council back in 2016. You're talking about the Planning Commission before I served on our local Planning Commission there as well. So I understand the concerns and needs of municipalities. Fast forward, I was after the City Council, I joined the House of Delegates back in 2017 and have been in the State Senate since 2020. So a very accelerated path, so to speak, to where we are here today. That was never the, the plan. The plan, as much as like you guys, I'm sure, getting involved is because you care about your communities. I deeply care about my community. I care about Western Maryland. I think there's a lot of similarities between things in Washington County as well as here in Frederick County. And, you know, like I said, we're here to, to help and be able to provide, you know, the resources and the support that we're able to and really open those lines of communication. You know, Senator Huff has, has represented you guys in the past. I talked to Senator Huff just the other day. And as we all know, he's running for county executive here right now. And, you know, again, you know, just wanted to be able to provide any information that we can or any support we can. I brought with me Mary Teal Medina, who's from our, our staff. She's our legislative director. Also Liz Jones, our chief of staff. She unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. But that's kind of our team here. So anything we can do to help out and assist with you guys is going forward. For a lot of conversations this evening about M dot S H A and M D E, anything that you're running into where we can be of assistance, please don't reach out or please don't hesitate to reach out to us. Exactly. You called that there, Mr. President. Please don't hesitate to, to reach out to us. Anything we can do to help out on that end, we most certainly will. You know, that, that's pretty much kind of, you know, the, the whole thing we want to do is introduce herself going forward. You know, as we're getting ready, as I'm sure you, you found Senator Huff previously, you don't want to be thinking about any legislative priorities the town may have. You know, this is the time we want to start, you know, looking through those. You know, once we get to Annapolis in January, a lot of those things have already been said. If there's requests to be made, we want to be working through this year during the late summer, early fall, so we can make any of those type of requests to, you know, the Department of Budget, Budget Management, to the Governor's Office, different agencies, things of that nature. So if there are things that need to be, need to be addressed, certainly we'll be in contact with the town manager as well. But just wanted to again, just kind of introduce ourselves, say hello. And if you guys had any questions for me, I'm more than happy to take those. But at the same time, most importantly, just wanted to introduce ourselves and see how we can be of assistance to the town of Emmitsburg. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions at this time from the board?
No question, but just a comment. It means a lot to have you here already. It's only been a couple of weeks and you've already found your way to Emmitsburg. So that's
No, I appreciate that. We wanted to be here a little bit sooner. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, the map officially went in place back in January. But then you had the primary elections going through and I'm in election season now as well. You know, we're confident we're going to remain here, but that is, you know, it's, as you know, you're talking about your town elections too. I mean, elections are, you know, you gotta go through that process. But I do appreciate that commissioner because, you know, it's important to us, you know, to make sure that we make those relationships with, with the communities that, that we represent. You guys here as well as Thurmont and everything else in between. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Sweeney?
We could use your help with MS four program. If you can, any help we can get on that.
MS four, I know the city Hickers Sound just went through a whole big thing with MS four in the last year or two. It's
All towns is going to have problems with this.
So we Yep.
So absolutely. What we appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Cash.
That's what comes down to a lot of times, to understand ourselves.
Great, okay. So, Mr. Burns, anything?
Yes, sir. Sir, thank you for coming up. Greatly appreciate you making the trip and staff. Thank you for being here and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Absolutely. I'll leave a stack of cards with the town manager. Make sure you guys all have that. That way you have our contact information. All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, I call Mr. Sloan forward.
Eric Sloan, live here in Emmitsburg, big yellow house. Won't give you the address.
You don't need to. We're, we're in new territory.
First thing is, is traffic. And you get up and down the roads, you know, so far nobody's killed anybody, but we're getting into the bicyclists. And every year they go through. And a lone bicyclist isn't that bad, but when you get a lot of them that are playing the Tour de France and they don't understand that Maryland said years ago, they have to obey traffic laws. And when they come around a corner without stopping, you just sort of cringe and pray to God you don't hear any screeching. This is the last thing I need to do is pick anybody up in my, my little corner. That and let's keep everything green in this town. Plant trees.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming in. Good evening. All right. At this time, I call Ms. Diane Walbrecker. Commissioner Walbrecker.
Ex commissioner, but, but thank you. Diane Walbrecker, I live here in Emmitsburg. And I wanted to talk about recovery. I noticed on the agenda that we were going to be addressing recovery and making September Recovery Month. And I was so excited. And I called Zach and left a message and I said, great. We're going to be talking about how to incorporate disaster recovery into our comprehensive plan. And the funny thing is that I left him that message at like seven o'clock. Because you know, I, I really believe in towns planning for disaster recovery, even small towns like ours, because I know what a difference it can make across the nation. And as I was driving down, I thought to myself, you know, you ever have one of those moments where you think to yourself, oh, duh, I just made the stupidest mistake. That's what I realized, driving down here. And I actually had to laugh out loud because of course it was about substance abuse recovery, which is also a very important recovery aspect. But anyway, so just wanted to mention, as we work through the new comprehensive plan, which we're going to be doing shortly, I hope that we are able to look at some of the lessons that we've learned from past disasters and figure out how to work better to handle those disasters. I know there was a lot of problems with housing after the, the fire in the apartment building there on the square. And there was some confusion right after the disaster with, with who was in charge, what was happening, how donations got set up. And there's a lot of things that we can do to make life smoother for all of us in the town, working together with the fire department and the ambulance department and the planners. So anyway, sorry about my mistake. Zach and I laughed about it later. But I hope as we do get into the comprehensive plan, that we can add some elements of recovery to that as well. And I hope that who's ever working on the comprehensive plan can go to that workshop with Fraley's because that's going to be really important. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now invite Mr. Steel, Austin Steel to come forward.
Hello, my name is Austin Steel. I'm the president of Emmitsburg. I'm actually speaking as a resident. However, some of you know, I have an organization called Trail Conservancy. I'm executive director and spent thousands of dollars to help get this trail system we have here on the mountain, which apparently people enjoy. So I'm actually coming here for just two things I want to ask for. Apparently there's a connector that may be happening. I can ask a question first, if it's possible. Is that connector that's there now, was that approved by the town? Because I don't know if that's true. Between the green and the yellow.
Yes, that was approved by the town. That's complete.
Okay, so, so my request
Phase one is complete. I'll say it that way.
Okay, so my request is actually to build a sustainably designed connector trail between the green and the yellow. So what is there now? It does not meet those qualifications. However, you know, there's some positive things that can be taken from that. So it's a win-win. So my proposal is to actually have a sustainably designed trail. It's similar to what I saw on one of the maps was brought out there when I was at, at the race. It was out there and I saw a line on the map. Very close to the one I had proposed years ago. Those were all for later phases. So if this is a time that this can happen where there's a later phase, then that would be a time to consider it. So that, that's the, the first, that's the main thing that I wanted to ask for. And we, we can go into later meetings in more details. The second thing was more about the safety because what's there now is not safe and it's not signed. So I'm up there at the, at the intersection and I've got somebody, a hiker comes through and he doesn't, he's never been here before. He's asking me about this trail. So well, it's a trail that was put in recently and they don't know what it is. So the safety issue is to make sure there's signage, even if it's temporarily, so the people aren't going to get lost. So that's the, those are the two things I wanted to mention. And hopefully we can further talk about the connector trail in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. All right. So the folks, we have to sign up for public comment at this time. All right, now we turn to, for clarity's sake, we have no administrative business at this time. So we turn to our consent agenda. I'm on page twenty-three of thirty-six. We turn to staff in a moment. First item relates to the reappointment of Mark Long to the Planning Commission with a term of August fifth, twenty twenty-two to August fifth, twenty twenty-seven. The second item relates to the appointment of Dan Dornets as an alternate to the Board of Appeals with a term of August first, twenty twenty-two to August first, twenty twenty-five. So staff, any other pieces for this one? Or you just want, do we take these one at a time?
Yes, one at a time, just consent.
Okay, so as these are consent agenda, when I call for the vote, we will not have discussions. Just a quick reminder for process. So at this time, is there a motion to accept the reappointment of Mark Long to the Planning Commission with the term stated? So moved. Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion? Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Very good. Congratulations, sir. All right. We now turn to the appointment of Dan Dornets as an alternate to the Board of Appeals with the term stated. Is there a motion for the appointment of Mr. Dan Dornets?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second for his motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. We now turn to the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Moving forward, we turn to the treasurer's report. Mr. Treasurer? Good evening. It's the treasurer's report for August first, two thousand twenty-two. We, this is the cash activity as of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We had a cash balance on July first of twenty twenty-two of seven million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, sixty-six dollars. We had deposits in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, withdrawals in the amount of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, which left us with an operating budget forward of seven million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven. The top ten checks written and signed in the month of end of June and July are listed below. And as you can see, next to several of them, several are grant funded. So we're not paying those out of pocket directly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the treasurer or staff related to these items? No, hearing none, we move forward. All right, we turn to the planning commission for their report. Mr. Ritz?
Thank you. Planning Commission met on July twenty-fifth. It was action-packed agenda. It's probably the largest agenda I've seen as, as a member of the Planning Commission. We conditionally approved Christ Community Church addition plat. As a note to everyone here that doesn't know, the existing barn on that property will be demolished. We conditionally approved Christ Community Church forest and delineation plan. Conditionally approved Christ Community Church preliminary and final forest conservation plans. And wanted to note that the applicant will plant additional trees rather than seek the fee in lieu of. We tabled the Christ Community Church site plans, so that additional plat comments may be addressed. The addition plat recorded and that a list of sixty-three conditions are met. However, we did move to allow Christ Community Church to increase their number of parking spaces from forty to seventy-five with the condition that the parking lot landscaping and tree plantings along parking spaces adjacent to Creamy Road would occur. We conditionally approved the Brookfield parcel CD and E. As a reminder, they're the ones there at the, the entrance to Timber Mill runoff of Maryland one forty. We conditionally approved that forest and delineation plan, the preliminary forest conservation plan. The applicant is requesting to pay the fee in lieu of, which would add to the town forest conservation fund. Conditionally approved Brookfield parcel CD and E preliminary subdivision plat and approve those same parcels, the adequate public facilities ordinance application, meaning that additional development will not adversely affect existing roads, public water supply, public sewer capacity, school capacity and emergency services. And that's it. Any questions? Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. No questions, sir. Thank you very much. Moving forward, we turn now to our first agenda item. I'm on page twenty-five of thirty-six still. And that is the approval of the twenty twenty-two election judges for consideration. Staff, do you want to turn to you on this?
Great. As we do every year, the board, the mayor recommends four election judges for the upcoming election in September. The four applicants that we received this year are people that have done it previously in years past. Sharon Hayne, Tammy May, Charlotte Mazaleski and Lynn Orndorf. The mayor's twenty twenty-two recommendation for the election judges, Chief Judge Sharon Hayne, Judge Lynn Orndorf, Judge Tammy May and greeter alternate judge Charlotte Mazaleski.
This mind, this recommendation in front of us, is there a motion to accept the recommendation as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second for the mayor's recommendation?
So, second.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we turn now to agenda item number two. Proclamation making August second, twenty twenty-two National Night Out for consideration.
Thank you, sir. The proclamation, National Night Out Tuesday, August second, two thousand twenty-two, E Eugene Myers Community Park, six PM to eight PM. I'm going to give a little preview of it first that tomorrow in Emmitsburg, the sixth annual National Night Out event will be held in the park, community park, Eugene, Eugene Myers Park. Event will feature free burgers donated by McDonald's, ice pops donated by Jubilee, hot dogs donated by the Davis family. Thank you, sir. There will also be a police vehicle, truck, ambulance, pony rides, betting zoo, music, games, vendors and more. Public parking for that will be in the field behind the Emmitsburg Library and Town Office. And will drive will be closed to vehicle or travel, starting at five forty-five. National Night Event and is just one of thousands of communities from the fifty states hosting other national nights out. Celebrations on the first Tuesday in August of each year. Event promotes police community partnership, neighborhood camaraderie, making Emmitsburg and other places safer and more caring place to live. Thank you to our donors this year, McDonald's, Jubilee, Vigilant Hoes, the Davis Family, Christ Community Church and the Sherf. Thank you, Pastor Joe. Okay, if I'm, I'm going to go ahead. There are a lot of these sites. I might share with you. Okay, yeah, thank you. Proclamation, National Night Out Tuesday, August second, two thousand twenty-two, E Eugene Myers Community Park, six to eight PM. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, N A T W, the acronym, sponsors a national community building campaign, campaign on the first Tuesday in August, every year entitled National Night Out. And whereas National Night Out has been an annual event in the town of Emmitsburg for the past five years. And whereas National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in the town of Emmitsburg to join over thirty-eight million people in over sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, US territories, Canadian cities, military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night is an annual community-based building campaign that promotes police community camaraderie, neighborhood camaraderie. neighborhood camaraderie, uh, to make our communities safer and more caring place to live. And whereas essential that there are all neighbors of the town of Emmitsburg come together with the police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor, council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland, you hereby proclaim Tuesday, August second, two thousand twenty-two, national night out in Emmitsburg. And you hereby call upon all citizens, neighbor, community agencies, business to join the Frederick County Sheriff's Office and the National Association of Town Watch in support of national light out. And E Eugene Myers Community Park adopted this the first day of August, two thousand twenty-two. It'll be signed by myself and, uh, uh, the, uh, Mr. O'Donnell, the president of.
Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented? Thank you. Is there a second for the motion? Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Davis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Turn now to agenda item number three. I'm on page twenty-eight of thirty-six. Another proclamation.
We actually have a presenter on Zoom. This is her PowerPoint. Um, do we have Anna on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Is that Kathy?
Yes. Uh, if you don't mind introducing yourself to the board and then we do have your PowerPoint up and just let us know when you want us to change slides.
Okay, will do. Thank you. Um, I apologize. I'm not there in person. I, I would have been had it not been for my um, uh, scheduling skills didn't work out. Um, at any rate, I my name's Anna Staveley. I am working with Cross Bridges this year on their Frederick County Goes Purple campaign. Uh, what exactly is Frederick County Goes Purple? We're asking municipalities across the county to participate, um, by decorating their municipalities with purple decorations, um, banners and, um, having a memorial site. Um, if you could go to the next slide. So first, um, we're asking for the town of Emmitsburg to issue a proclamation for the month of September to be the month of recovery. Next slide. Um, and we would love to have it be read and signed today if that's possible.
Yes, we will do that after your presentation.
Okay, great. Next slide. Um, so as I mentioned with the decorations, um, there will be, uh, pinwheels of the planners, ribbons tied to lampposts. Um, there will be a banner too at the park, um, which will have photos. Um, and that will be part of a memorial. We would like to have residents in the downtown area or across Emmitsburg to, uh, decorate the, their porches with purple light bulbs. Um, just to show the solidarity with, uh, Frederick County Goes Purple. Um, and, uh, what we're asking for tonight is if it's okay for us to decorate anytime between the twenty-eighth and thirty-first of August and everything will be removed by September thirtieth.
Yeah, that should be fine. Absolutely.
Okay, um, next slide, please. So I mentioned memorial and the, it will be in the, uh, Eugene, uh, Myers Community Park. Um, and it will be set up for the entire month. Um, the pictures here are of a larger memorial that was in Frederick city last year, um, due to, uh, cost constraints. We won't be able to replicate that at, in the Emmitsburg, uh, community park. But we will have at least two or three big banners. Next slide, please. Um, and this is something new we're doing this year, which is a prayer walk. Um, that we'd like to have on September twenty-fourth at one PM. Uh, and it would be, it would start at the community center building, go down South Seaton Avenue to the square, turn left on West Main Street, turn left again down Jameson Street. And then down to the community park, um, where we'll end at the memorial site. So just wanted to confirm that that is agreeable as well.
Yes, I think you and I talked about it and, um, I sent you, uh, Sergeant Linnahan's information just to make them aware of your prayer walk on that day.
Yes, yes. Thank you for that, Kathy. Next slide. And we did ask for a donation. Thank you to the municipality of, um, town of Emmitsburg for giving us a five hundred dollar donation that will help us tremendously with, um, getting decorations and T-shirts and so forth and the banners printed.
If you could just send me the unofficial request for that and we'll get that processed this week.
Okay, I, I, it can the slide be the official request or do you need it on like a letterhead or something?
Need it on letterhead.
Okay.
You can just email it to me. That would be fine.
I have a question. Could, uh, uh, other, um, organizations donate?
So I don't know if you heard Commissioner Sweeney is asking if there's other organizations in the town of Emmitsburg that would be able to donate as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When you get the paper, can you give?
Yes.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I'll send you the link Kathy, um, with our donation page. And you can probably even just search it Frederick County Goes Purple, um, online. Uh, and you should, it should lead you to our donation page.
Okay.
And that's, that's my presentation and.
And then we do have the proclamation. Um, it's not in your packet. I sent everybody, unfortunately, I put the wrong one in there.
It's not.
Commissioner Ritz caught it for me this morning. Um, I have, I have the actual one. Whoever's gonna read it.
Before we read that, um, just a quick thing. On the map, it showed that the prayer walk on the twenty-fourth would be ending at the Seaton Center on South Seaton Avenue, but it, but it's been relocated. Did I misread what they?
Senior Center.
Oh, the senior center. Okay, all right. So we need glasses. All right. This is good. Yeah. All right. So we're okay then.
Yes.
All right. I showed my age big time. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we turn to you for the proclamation.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, proclamation, national recovery month, September, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas national recovery month is a national observance held every September. Unify the community and reduce substance-related deaths and overdoses. And whereas mental and substance uses disorders affect all communities. And whereas nearly half of all the overdose deaths involve a prescription painkiller, a prescription painkillers are, are killing more people than car accidents and homicides combined. And whereas one in fourteen's report having abused or misabused a prescription drug at least once. Four out of five people who use heroin started with the recreational use of a prescription pains killer, painkiller. And whereas the town of Emmitsburg offers hope and resources, supports those in active addiction, recovery and their loved ones. Whereas the town of Emmitsburg invests in the future of a, of its use through prevention and education. And whereas the town of Emmitsburg joins Frederick County and Going Purple, standing together and conquering addiction. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim the month of September as national recovery month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, businesses to go purple and bring awareness and understanding of mental health and substance use disorders. And to celebrate those living in recovery, adopted this the first day of August to be signed by me as mayor. And, uh, Mr. O'Donnell is president of the board of commissioners.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, so with this in mind, um, is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented by Mayor Briggs?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Burns's motion?
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Mr. Burns, seconded by, uh, Mr. Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, quick item. Um, agenda item number four has been postponed. It related to the Brookfield uh, community and for open space lots. Uh, do we have a future possibility on this one? Will we see this in September perhaps?
Probably October.
October. Okay, pretty good. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Hey, it's me over here. Hi. I was wondering, um, unless anyone else has objection to it, do we want to swap agenda items five and six?
Yes, that's.
Cause I, I see Sister Higgins sitting there. Maybe, maybe she'd like to.
Yes.
Okay.
I think you have at least three supporters here. Um, board, are we good with this?
Okay.
Modifying the agenda.
Yeah.
Sister, we're gonna invite you forward in a moment. Um, we're flipping two items so we can bring you here so we can let you have the rest of your evening. Um, Mr. Briggs.
Okay.
We turn to you.
Mr. Mayor, if you could speak up when reading that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, proclamation declaring Sister Anne Higgins, town of Emmitsburg, poet, poet laureate. Whereas the town of Emmitsburg wishes to encourage reflection upon the richness and diversity of people, of the people, locations, traditions of the town of Emmitsburg. And whereas on August fifth, two thousand nineteen, the Board of Commissioners established a two-year honorary position of poet laureate for the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland. Whereas the poet laureate town of Emmitsburg encourages the reading, writing and sharing and, uh, and celebration of poetry. Whereas Sister Anne Higgins has selected by, has been selected by the Board of Commissioners and the mayor as the town of Emmitsburg poet laureate for a two-year term beginning August two thousand twenty-two and in August, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas Sister Anne, a native of Westchester, Pennsylvania, is a longtime Emmitsburg area resident. In addition to many other roles, Sister Anne has taught English for over twenty-two years at Mount St. Mary's University. Well, it's a long time. Whereas Sister Anne has been a member of the Daughters of Charity for close to fifty years and has graduated of, of St. Joseph's College in Emmitsburg. Whereas Sister Anne is an accomplished poet with nine public, public, published poetry books. More than a hundred of her poems have been, uh, published in journals, magazines to include the writer's almanac on several occasions. And whereas Sister Anne has given readings at Curious Wanda Bookstore in Frederick, the Yocan Miller Cabin and Cafe Music in Washington DC as well as other venues on the East Coast. Whereas Sister Anne is passionate about inspiring the town of Emmitsburg and the public to engage in public. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg may uh, do hereby declare Sister Anne Higgins as honorary town of Emmitsburg poet laureate adopted the first day of August, signed by myself as mayor and Mr. O'Donnell as president of the board. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's, uh, motion?
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Davis, is ready for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Sister, congratulations and thank you for serving.
All she'd like to read.
Very good.
Thank for being our guest today.
You got the nomination. Now we put you to work, sister. So.
Push to, push the button.
This is just one short poem. And it's for, it's, it's appropriate for the season. It's called Cherry Tomatoes. Suddenly it is August again, so hot, breathless heat. I sit on the ground in the garden of caramel, picking ripe cherry tomatoes and eating them. They are so ripe that the skin is split, so warm and sweet from the attentions of the sun. The juice bursts in my mouth, an ecstatic taste, and I feel that I am in the mouth of summer, sloshing in the saliva of August. Hummingbirds halo me there in the great green silence and my own bursting heart splits me with life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sister.
We'll, we'll have a signed proclamation for you. We'll frame it and everything. Thank you very much.
We now turn to the update on the MS four permit with staff.
All right, Amy, if you could put the slideshow up, please.
For clarity sake, this was agenda item five that we, we switched.
Sure. Mr. Golden, before you start, if we have questions, should we hold them off to your finished, your presentation or do you, would, would you like us to interrupt? Please interrupt. Okay. Yes, thanks. Absolutely. All right. So I last provided an update to the town, um, our MS four permit on October seventh, two thousand nineteen. So we figured it was about time to give everyone an update. A lot has happened in this time. I do apologize for those who watched this presentation before. There's a lot of similarities, but there's also a lot of updates and new information as well. So. So we want to give a little bit, again, a, a brief background. Part of the, the permit is to educate the public. So we'll use this as a, a way to do that. So as always, I will give a quick refresher before we get into tonight's main discussion. So what is it exactly is, uh, what exactly is MS four? MS four stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. An MS four is a conveyance or system of conveyances that is owned by a public entity that discharges waters within the state designated to or used to collect or convey stormwater. This includes storm drains, pipes, ditch, ditches, et cetera. They are not part of a publicly owned treatment facility or sewage treatment plant. So a rain, raindrop may land on a tree and evaporate. It may land on a farm field and soak into the soil or it may land on a rooftop driveway or road and travel down the street into a storm drain or stream. Um, rain in an urban or suburban area that does not evaporate or soak into the ground, but instead runs across the land and into the nearest waterway is considered stormwater runoff. Increased development across the watershed has made stormwater runoff the fastest growing source of pollution, um, to the Chesapeake Bay. So how does this stormwater runoff affect the Chesapeake Bay? As stormwater flows across streets, sidewalks and lawns, it can pick up harmful pollutants and push them into the storm drains, rivers and streams. These pollutants can include lawn and garden fertilizers, pest waste, sand and sediment, chemical, uh, contaminants and litter. Stormwater runoff can cause a number of environmental problems. In order to control and reduce stormwater pollution, the town of Emmitsburg is required to be covered under the United States Environmental Protection Agency's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Phase Two, General Discharge Permit Number thirteen IM fifty-five hundred until October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Frederick County municipalities covered under this permit with us include Brunswick, Frederick, Middletown, Mount Airy, Myersville, Thurmont and Walkerville. Mr. Golden. Sure. I have my first question. Yes. The eight municipalities that are listed, there are a total of twelve in Frederick County. Um, Woodsboro, New Market, Burkittsville and Rosemont are not listed. Is there a reason why? The, um, federal government determined that they're not an urbanized community based on the number of, uh, the amount of impervious that they have. So it has nothing to do with population. It's rather the amount of impervious. Correct. Services. That's correct. Thank you. Sure. All right. It is important to note that this permit is mandatory and it's an unfunded federal and state mandate. This is not the town's first MS four permit. The town was required to be covered under permit zero three IM fifty-five hundred. This permit was effective from April fourteenth, two thousand three to April fourteenth, two thousand eight. The state of Maryland administratively extended this permit to, from, uh, two thousand eight to October thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. During this period, the town was responsible for meeting, um, only the six minimum control measures, which we will talk about in a few minutes. Also during this time, many outside organizations, including municipalities sued the federal and state governments over the permit requirements. The federal and state governments won the lawsuits and that is why we are still talking about this today. Any permit noncompliance constitutes a violation of the Federal Clean Water Act and its grounds for civil and criminal enforcement actions. Here are some of the federal violations for noncompliance. In addition, here are some state violations for noncompliance. As you can see from the both slides, the penalties are extremely large for permit noncompliance. EPA and MDE does find municipalities. For example, Manor Township in Lancaster, Pennsylvania paid 150,000 in legal engineering and staff costs related to negotiate $175,000 fine down to approximately 41,000. So they spent approximately 200,000 on permit noncompliance. Bel Air, Maryland was fined 35,000 in 2014 for permit noncompliance. Baltimore City, Inarrendo County, and Hartford County was fined nearly 250,000 in 2010. There are many more examples which can be found in a simple Google search. I have copies of news articles relating to these fines if needed. Minimum control measures. So in order to remain compliant with the federal and state governments, we are required to make progress on the following six minimum control measures. Public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection, elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The most expensive part of our permit is the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Plan, which is the main purpose of our discussion today. So for public education and outreach, the, the purpose of this is to implement and maintain a public education and outreach program and distribute educational materials to town businesses, residents, and employees in order to help produce the discharge of pollutants caused by stormwater runoff. We frequently distribute stormwater educational materials through our newsletters, website, Channel 99, and other appropriate methods. Therefore, costs to the town are extremely minimal. The town has received extremely positive reviews from Maryland Department of Environment for our public education program. Public involvement and participation. The purpose of this program is to create and foster opportunities for public participation in the MS four management program for controlling stormwater discharges. In 2019 of May, the town was awarded $3,000 grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in order to create and implement a storm drain marking program. 99% of the storm drains in town have been marked to date by volunteers and a little bit by staff. In 2019, September, the town was awarded $5,000 grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in order to create and implement a rain barrel program. This money was used to offset 50% of the cost of the rain barrels to town residents, property owners, and businesses. We held two educational workshops and we distributed a ton of educational materials in our sewer and water bills. To date, we sold 123 rain barrels and we are currently sold out. The town also sponsored two, two rain barrel educational workshops. One in 2019 and one 2020, right before the COVID outbreak. Since we have been very successful in obtaining grant funds, costs have been minimal for this section. Let's see, on October 9th and 23rd, 2021, November 6th, 2021, April 2nd, 16th, 21 and 23 of 2022, May 14th of 22 and June 18th and 25th of 22. Streamlink and the town held tree planting events at our wastewater treatment plant facility. To date, we have planted 11 acres of trees in order to help satisfy our permit restoration requirements, which we will soon discuss. Illicit discharge detection and elimination. The purpose of this plan is to identify and eliminate illicit storm drain system discharges. Impermitty will satisfy this requirement by field screening, storm drain system outfalls, inspecting the storm drain system to identify any source of illicit discharge, eliminating any illegal connection or illicit discharge to the storm drain system and enforcing penalties where appropriate.
Mr. Golden.
Yes.
Could you go back to that slide, please?
Yes.
I know you and I talked about this before, but just, just for the record here. So this is an example of this would be a, a violation, correct? Or is this, is this?
No, it's not a violation. How we are looking at it, we're looking for, you know, the green radioactive glowing slime basically coming out of it. The county would see this as a violation because there is significant overgrowth.
Okay.
But that's something the county handles.
Okay, but it wouldn't be part of our
Correct.
audit, so to speak.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. All right, here we go. As required by the permit, we have a contractor. We had a contractor create a standard operating procedures document, which is used for yearly mandatory outfall inspections. The town is required to inspect 20% of the stormwater pond outfalls in town each year. A contractor performs the inspections and it costs the town approximately $3,500 per year. Here is a picture of the outfall inspection sheet, which is required to be filled out after each inspection. If a contractor finds any abnormalities at the outfall site, they must take samples, send them to a lab and test. And if, if positive for pollutants, we must conduct a full investigation to find the source. Also, they do these after, way after storm events. So there should be no water, standing water at the outfalls. So just for an example, I got the report back for this year and there were, was some standing water at some of the outfalls. They just take a little test kits and test it for phosphorus, anything that's strange. And luckily they didn't find anything abnormal. But that's just an example of what they do. If, if it is abnormal, then they've sent it to a lab. Construction. Construction site stormwater runoff. The purpose of this is to comply with Maryland's State Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. The statute in Comer specifically specify the requirements for any construction activity that disturbs 5,000 square feet or 100 cubic yards or more in earth movement. The town of Emmitsburg relies on Frederick County for the implementation of this section. This goes back to 1977 and County Resolution 8520. The section also requires staff to be adequately trained on proper procedures and actions to address potential discharge and pollutants into the storm drain system as a result of any construction activity. This requirement does not have any costs associated with it for the town. Post-construction stormwater management. This is to maintain an acceptable, acceptable stormwater management program in accordance with the annotated code of Maryland. They require that stormwater management be addressed for every new development and redevelopment. Again, that disturbs over 5,000 square foot. We also rely on Frederick County to handle this for the town, therefore doesn't have any costs associated with it. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The purpose of this is to develop and implement operations and maintenance program that includes training component to prevent and and reduce pollutant runoff from municipal operations. Town staff must take an annual training on the importance of water quality protection through pollution prevention and good housekeeping measures. Topics usually include spill prevention and response, controls for reducing or eliminating the discharge of pollutants during facility operations, proper disposal of waste, and routine inspection to detect or correct and correct potential stormwater discharges at the facilities that we own. The town holds mandatory training sessions for all employees each year in and around September. Yearly trainings for staff typically cost about $500.
Question on that, Zach. Is it possible that the, the commissioners could be invited to that? I don't know if anybody could attend, but I think it might help educate us a little bit. Plus the lunch looked pretty good. So I'm, I'm in.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd love to have you guys. The mayor does come sometimes. So we'll, I'll send out an invite. Sure. All right. So the most important and most expensive requirement of the MS four permit is the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Work Plan. The permit requires MS four communities to commence restoration efforts for 20% of the existing development plans that have little unacceptable or no stormwater management. Restoration projects must be completed by January 1st, 2025. So step one of the restoration work plan was to conduct a baseline impervious assessment, which we completed in our first year as we were required to do. So based on our baseline impervious assessment, we are required to restore 20.45 impervious acres. So here are the results of the assessment. So our total impervious that we are responsible for is 146.74 acres. We deduct the total impervious acres treated by acceptable methods such as, such as stormwater basins and rain gardens, which was found to be 40.15 acres. Then we subtract the total impervious acres treated by non-structural practices such as the swales of Pembroke Development. That's 4.33 acres. That equals our total impervious that were required to, a total impervious untreated is 102.26 acres. And you take 20% of that, we are required to treat 20.45 acres during this permit term. And as you know, we get permits all the time for new sheds, new houses, everything. So it's always going to increase every five-year permit term. So step two was to develop and implement an impervious area restoration work plan in order to treat the 20.45 acres. So we had a meeting a few years ago to discuss solutions that we were going to do. So here is our up-to-date restoration activity schedule, which shows how we are meeting our impervious restoration mandate before the permits end. So completed projects to date, we planted the 11 acres of trees at the wastewater treatment plant, which provided us 4.18 acres of credit and cost us nothing due to our great partnership with the Daughters of Charity and Streamlink Education. And also First Energy gave us a nice grant as well. We did a septic connection to wastewater treatment plant at 500 East Main Street. This provided us 0.39 acres of credit and cost the town $13,000. Septic connection to wastewater treatment plant at 502 East Main Street. This provided us 0.39 acres of credit and cost approximately 15,000. It's about 15,200. Emmitsburg Community Park Outfall Stabilization. This provided us 0.04 acres of credit and cost 3,300. Ongoing projects include monthly street sweeping, which give us an average of about 0.11 acres of credit. Monthly catch base cleaning, which gives us an average of 0.707 acres of credit. The Silo Hills Stormwater Pond retrofit, this is now estimated to cost 266,555. We were able to obtain a one or 155,400 grant. So total cost of the town should be approximately 111,155. This is also pending change orders for unforeseen problems. We may also be able to get the remaining cost covered by a Maryland Department of Natural Resources grant, which we're waiting word from them right now. So we may be able to get the remaining part covered, but no promises. Streamlink will be starting planting the 16 more, 16 more acres of trees at the Daughters of Charity property on the east side of US 15. This will generate 6.08 acres of credit. And there will be no cost to the town again with the Daughters and Streamlink Education and First Energy. As you can see from the screen highlighted in yellow, we will still be short approximately 0.64 acres. We may be able to meet this gap with additional street sweepings, catch basin cleanings. If not, we will work with MDE staff for solutions. I actually reached out to the Daughters of Charity this week or last week to discuss some outfall stabilization projects that they may be wanting to do. They're very environmental conscious. So they are thinking about it and we'll get back to us. So that will take, that would actually take care of our deficit.
Zach.
Yes.
With the archives going in and the construction that they're doing for all of that, is there any way to capitalize on the construction the daughters are doing?
It's actually going to all be interior
Okay.
of the building.
They're not doing anything exterior.
Nothing exterior. So we are confident though, that all ongoing projects will be completed before permit end and we will satisfy our federal and state permit requirements. So our current permit expenditures to date, this is from October 31st, 2018 to July 12th of 2022, was 191,826 and 92 cents. This figure does not include staff time, attorney time, supplies, postage, etc., which are paid out of the general fund planning department budget. Tree planting expenses of 454,712.63, which were, were in paid for by two grants obtained by the Streamlink and the town. And then the value of donated easements from the Daughters of Charity for tree plantings. So the new permit will start on October 31st, 2024, unless extended by the federal and state governments. We must then start the process all over again. We have to conduct a new baseline impervious assessment and then treat another 20% and it goes on and on. So future restoration project ideas that we've been throwing around. We are assuming that we are going to need to restore another 20 to 25 acres. So things we are thinking about to continue the mechanical street sweeping. Matty may have found a grant in order to purchase a, a street sweeper. Right now we're only getting half credit for street sweeping because the, the state now requires that we street sweep the streets twice a month or we get half credit. So that's why you kind of see a deduction in what we're estimating for, for credits. Catch basin cleaning, we're going to continue that. We're in conversation with the Daughters of Charity right now and Streamlink to plant another 30 to 40 acres on their property on South Seaton Avenue where the old Seaton Center was located. This is estimated to be about 11 to 15 credits. We have the North Seaton Avenue Green Street working. We're working on that. That's estimated five credits. The possibility of the North Gate Basin retrofit, this is six credits. A new municipal parking lot inclusion of a rain garden or other stormwater management treatment structures. Unknown credits this time. It's just something we're floating around. Maybe able to get two birds with one stone. So that is my presentation. I'm here for questions.
So to understand what might benefit us, I mean, we're looking to eliminate sites where there's erosion, correct? Is that part of where we get our points? I know we want to capture water also, but we're trying to eliminate literally the loss of soil from place A to place B.
That, that can be part of it.
Okay.
Yes. So like stream bank restoration, that would be erosion control. Outfall stabilization, that's definitely erosion control. But erosion control is part of it. Impervious elimination is a, a large part of it.
So there's one site in town that I can think of that has a sidewalk slab near a swell where there's a void underneath and the void is spilling. It's eroding, the material's eroding from beneath the slab into the swell. Would fixing that give us points? No?
It wouldn't, unfortunately not.
But it would save infrastructure.
It would.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'll follow up with you at that location later. But that's, that's interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
We're done. Yes, from Mr. Sweeney. Thank you.
The two new properties are two new, the runners. They can do anything out there, maybe?
Yeah. So part of the post and pre-construction requirements, they were required to have the basin. And that's, that basin is actually treats and stores stormwater management. So their impervious will not go against future permits for us at this time. Now 30 years down the road, when the state decides that that's not an adequate treatment of water as they're doing now with basins built back in the nineties and eighties and early 2000s. That will happen at some point. But at this time, that basin will not be any kind of issues for us with impervious.
Also with the Christ Community Church's new project, a new church going in, is any tree plantings or anything we can do that maybe be done down there to help with the get some credit points?
Same thing with Christ Community Church. They're required to do the treatment facility and then storage facility. They're required to plant, I think it was an acre, a little under an acre of trees. I will reach out to the pastor to see if he's interested in partnering with the town for future areas because there's a lot of flood plain there. It's perfect area for trees. Which we can get credit for.
Maybe like the Seaton Center has the the environmental parking lot where it can drain through.
Permeable asphalt.
Yeah, the permeable asphalt.
They're putting enough, they're putting adequate treatment facilities in there that the permeable pavements won't do any difference.
Okay.
It doesn't count for or against because it's, it meets today's treatment standards.
Thank you. Mr. Ritz?
Yeah, I had a question regarding the impervious, the amount of the amount that the federal government looks at. How often does, does that number change? How often do they raise the bar or lower, whatever we're looking at here? The threshold of
20%?
Yeah.
It's always been 20% since I've worked on MS four permits.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I spoke with MD probably six months ago and they think it's going to be about the same 20% threshold. They said it may be a little bit lower. They don't know.
Okay. I was just thinking ahead because you, you've made a good point about the stormwater retention ponds, you know, 30 years from now, they're obsolete. So I'm thinking too, that that 20% number. I have a fear that that number is going to be a lot different.
Right now, anything constructed from 2022 previous are obsolete. They're just there for water containment. They're just there for uh water containment and not treatment. So we don't get any kind of credit for like North Gates Basin, for example, was built prior to that. Silo Hill Basin built prior to that, so we're not getting any treatment. So all that impervious is going negative on our numbers. All right.
Go ahead. I'm finished.
Sure.
The rest of Emmett Ridge two, will they can they upgrade the system there on outside?
That basin, I spoke with Frederick County about that when some people were looking at purchasing the property and that basin, there's no saving it. So that's one of the the main issues right now with people developing that. That basin can't be used. It has to be fully reconstructed to today's standards. So it's not gonna give us any credits. Actually, um once they do the new basin, that will offset all the new impervious. So it won't go against us.
Mr. Burns? Mr. Golden, the work we just did outside on Cedar Lane here with the paving and filling in of the water runoff from the stormwater pond in South Gate, did that help us at all or anything of that nature?
The sidewalks?
Yeah, the sidewalks. Uh we ran the piping underneath it and uh to the sewer line and anything like that to prevent it from flooding and rains. Did that help us at all?
Unfortunately, no. That was just to just try to help that. Yeah, it needed to be done.
Mr. Davis? You thought you were gonna get away with me not saying anything, but no, just to let you know, uh uh the survey that I filled out after the M M L conference. Um I did make a suggestion for next year to have some training on on this and at least have a discussion with the other municipalities on how they're dealing with it. And I'm still haven't given up of getting the traction to try to fight this, because it's just gonna continue to get out of hand and it you know, it's stopping us from doing things that we really, really need to do. And as I said before, there's no way for us to measure this, that the water is any cleaner coming out of Emmitsburg than it is coming in. And it's hard to 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 sell this to the citizens. And so I appreciate what you've done. It's 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 good. And I'll continue to try to learn it and I'll try to suck it up a little bit better. Mr. Burns?
Mr. Golden, the where we host the um I lost the words right now. Um we do it every Friday right outside the building.
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market.
Oh, yeah.
That property there, if we ever pave that as impervious or anything like that, would that ever help us or anything of that nature?
If you pave it, it's gonna go negative.
Just double checking.
Yep, sure.
Any other questions for staff? No? Okay, very good. Okay. Do you need anything from us other than consent to move forward?
No, no, we just wanted to provide. We want to provide an update that we're gonna meet our mandatory requirements. Um again, this is the low bearing fruit projects. We've went through that discussion with uh our other presentation, but we'll continue to look out the cheapest, you know, best bang for your buck projects for you guys.
And and I just asked that we we be real careful not to do anything extra because I did, you know, we did talk about we don't get extra credit. So if we do.
We don't get extra credit.
So when we get to that point, let's cut it off. You know, I just asked that you do that. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, we turn now to agenda item seven. And this is a discussion related to the proclamation declaring Lusk Ukraine a sister city to the town of Emmitsburg. Mr. Mayor and staff, we turn to you.
All right, Dave. Thank you very much. Um I I I know we've all been moved over the last year of what's gone on in Ukraine, especially on the heels of what we what sacrifices we had to make during the pandemic. At least we get to go home and uh lots of people are dying around us, but the this is a full scale invasion and uh um I it's it's a way of extending a friendship to an air country that really is reaching out and uh that's that's what it's all about. It's not about spending money over there. I I've got letters here from uh the Seaton Center, which uh I'll ask of Richard Donald to read and uh and there is a copy for everybody. And then I have a letter from Mount Saint Mary's that I'll ask Commissioner Burns to read. And I have one I'll read from uh uh a rest in here. Mr. Conrad Weaver, who's been over there four times. I just don't want to get lost in the news reel. It means a lot to what we're trying to understand and and growing up and not having kids in classrooms to do things and learn together. It's that they're going through an awful lot and we can lose sight of what what really it really is important. And every year I do something with Saint John's College in Annapolis, Santa Fe, and and it's a and this year the readings are all thanks Plato and you know, any any all kinds of re- reads every month and and we discuss them and it's on community. And uh um they've been devastated over there and I I I just felt moved to talk to them and we've had, we have another sister city that Commissioner Sweeney reminded me of. I don't know the name of that, but if I could, I'd like to read a letter first from um Conrad Weaver, Dear Mayor Briggs. Over the past seven years, I have had the opportunity to travel to Ukraine four times. During these trips, I have had the privilege of meeting many wonderful people, including a number of national leaders who will be working, who were working diligently to make improvements to their government and country. This past February, Russian brought on a full scale invasion, killing thousands of civilians as well as military personnel. Many of my friends and acquaintances are within harm's way and have either fled to neighboring countries or are helping with the war efforts. Many are ha- helping to bring hope and relief to Ukraine, Ukrainian refugees directly in con- in the conflict zones. The suffering there is significant, continues every even through today as I write this. I continue to stay in touch with many Ukrainian friends, including leaders of the regional emergency services. And I will continue to do what I can to raise awareness and support for valued soldiers and citizen soldiers defending their homeland. I write this letter in support of your ever supporting with the city of Lusk in Ukraine as a sister city. While the population size may be vast vastly different, I believe Emmitsburg unique quality in to partner with the Ukraine city. Our quiet way of life and love of community is a model for for any city. I believe that through this type of relationship, we can show Ukrainians our love and our support as they continue to have their very way of life threatened. On behalf of us who are connected to the important piece of the world, thank you for showing your support. I look forward to doing what I can to facilitate this important connection. Conrad Weaver, who lives at three forty three Mount Nearest Way. He's in uh out west uh doing a movie on that at this time, but um again, it we have something special. We're a contradiction. We're small, but there's so many big things going here. We have a whole land facility here, fire academy. We have a university and the university is coming downtown. It's starting to occupy different sections of the um sisters uh uh the largest administrative building in the in the in the county, four hundred and forty eight thousand square feet or whatever it is. They're they're filling those with their college and coming downtown and uh they're in support of this. So with that, I'll I'll ask the other gentleman if they would read what those other letters.
Mr. Burns?
Dear Board of Commissioners, I'm writing in support of Mayor Berg's initiative to create a sister city relationship with Lusk, Ukraine. Given the war in Ukraine, cities such as Lusk can use the support of cities and towns in the United States such as Emmitsburg. The good people of Emmitsburg are known for their willingness to help those in need and Lusk and people of Ukraine are in need. They can use the moral and other support in Emmitsburg can provide in these trying times in Ukraine. Lusk appears to have a vibrant intellectual and educational life with multiple universities and institutes of higher learning. Lassa Ukrainica Volin National University with over twelve thousand students is in downtown Lusk. Lusk is also the home of Lusk National Technical University and the Lusk University Institute of Human Development. Mount Saint Mary's would be interested in parting with one of those with one or more of these institutions of higher education in collaborative education opportunities that would benefit students and faculty of both Lusk and the Mount. We may also be able to provide or be able to support an institution's recover recovery effort post-war to some extent. I could see many potential areas for collaboration. Again, Mount Saint Mary's University and I support the noble effort to partner with and support Lusk, Ukraine. Once this relationship takes shape, the Mount will work with our neighbors in Emmitsburg to make this mutually beneficial for Lusk and Emmitsburg. Sincerely, Timothy Trainer, Ph D., President, Mount Saint Mary's University.
Thank you, sir. So this is from the Seaton Center. Dear Mayor Briggs, in response to your recent inquiry about the presence of the daughters of charity in Ukraine, I was only able to find that we have sisters still working in Iliev. Many of the sisters who were working in the eastern part of the country came west because of the dangers posed. DePaul International is also working in Ukraine. This, the following, explains what they are doing. We, the DePaul International folks, are one of the only agencies already based in Ukraine and are working across the country in Kharkiv, Odessa, Kyiv, and Western Ukraine, providing lifesavings food, shelters, and medication, as well as transporting one hundred plus tons of supplies from our depot in Slovakia into Ukraine. Our services have never met such demand and our team uh our teams are working tirelessly around the clock to reach those who need it most. It is difficult to get more information, Sister writes, but I hope this is helpful to you. I support any effort you are making to assist the people of Ukraine as the situation there grows more dangerous daily. Sincerely, Sister Martha Boden, Daughters of Charity, Executive Director, Seaton Center Incorporated.
Thank you, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you want to read the pro- proclamation or?
We're we want to, we're putting together, but I want to make sure we move. Okay, it's okay to have a proclamation and then uh we'll bring it back and and on September and have it read.
Okay, so Board, I'll ask, do we have consent for the mayor for a proclamation to uh ally the town of Emmitsburg as a sister city to uh Lusk in Ukraine? Do we have consent for this?
Sure. I mean, I I had a few questions, but I mean, do we wait to the proclamation night?
Uh your choice. I mean, it might be good now, so it's uh it's.
Did I did I catch something earlier? I must, it's it was hard to hear the mayor. Do we already have a sister city established with somebody you said?
Uh Commissioner Sweeney seems to feel that over his tenure, there was another sister city.
Oh, it's no longer Commissioner Sweeney?
I don't know. It's still sister city. When the when is that where we got our?
Oh, the tornado.
Okay.
And that's where we got our system here. So uh I keep thinking it's Lepeta, but it might be somewhere else. There is, we we do have, it it has came through the since I've been here before. But we've always, Emmitsburg has already had two fundraisers or more for the Ukraine residents.
Mr. Ritz?
My next question, Mr. Mayor, is this, are we, is this a symbolic uh relationship or are we pursuing this like the real deal? It was sister city international?
It it's um it's a little, we're gonna see where it goes, but everything would come back to you if it goes in anything else. But one of the um guests on our, we zoom with the uh the the mayor uh about a week and a half ago is a Ukrainian uh U S citizen, uh lives in Naples, Florida and has businesses. And you know, let's see how this thing grows. The university is is very, very uh excited about the potential of doing something there. Maybe we'll get one of these businesses that we've all been trying to attract up here. Maybe something will come of that, but uh there's no um no ties or anything for us to spend any money on it, anything like that. We're gonna investigate that sister city thing, but it would all come back to you if 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 it was, I I don't know what that.
Understood.
That's it, but it's really, really just to um uh they're wonderful people and um they're in a place that we don't even know and and thought we may have suffered through during the pandemic, but uh nothing like they've had there and it's still going on. And we just wanna uh I I feel, you know, I have a flag out in front of my house, but I want to do more than a flag and and it's um it's what you're uh Mr. Walbrecker was talking about disaster relief. They are into it. Yes, Kathy?
May I interject real quick?
Yes.
I think what the goal was, at least from the call that I sat on, was the the sharing of resources and ideas. Um listening to the mayor speak over there, um some of the programs they've implemented for their refugees and their uh mis- displaced families. I think there's a lot that can be learned from what they've done and how they've continued to thrive through the adversities. I know they're interested in our resources in Emmitsburg. Um FEMA, the Fire Academy, Mount Saint Mary's, um that kind of partnership, not a financial partnership. Um the Sister Cities International is, the way that I've read it, is for larger communities that are gonna do financial based projects um that they can connect with other sister cities in the United States as well as through over, you know, throughout the world. Um it's not something that I think, at least at this point, that the mayor or it would be beneficial for the town to even be a part of.
Okay.
Um the way that I've read that it works is it's basically, we do a proclamation and then there's a memorandum of understanding between the mayors of both cities.
Okay. No, that makes sense. Thanks. I I I didn't know if we were officially pursue pursuing that.
So, Mr. Ritz, just on a quick search, Frederick has sister cities, uh Germany, two in Germany, one in Brazil. The next closest would be Westminster. They have someone in Estonia.
Gettysburg has one.
Gettysburg has one. Baltimore has several. Annapolis has several. Uh Columbia Cumberland has one. But as far as a sister city that is listed or anything like that, Emmitsburg does not currently have one.
Okay.
Any anywhere out there for?
And I think most of those ones you just read or two are similar to what we have. They're just like a symbolic
Right.
relationship, not not nothing uh inter- like it's not with the membership dues and.
Yeah, some of them date back to nineteen fifty two, two thousand nineteen seventy six are kind of all over.
I think sometimes you'll see cultural exchanges between sister cities and certain programs. Um going back to the La Plata thing, when the tornado struck La Plata, uh they were in sort of a ground zero position where everything was just leveled in their downtown. And if I recall correctly, what we had agreed to with them was actual um not just equipment use, like literally getting one of our uh back hoes down there to help them literally with the clearing, but potentially staff. And we would be able to send staff or they would be self sustained.
Okay.
So uh it was sort of a a material promise of support. And they too, you know, made it mutual, said, hey, if you find yourself in this horrible circumstance in the future, we're gonna be there for you as well.
Okay, so I.
So that's sort of two things. Now, on sort of a sillier side, you can have more than one sister. I have four and I learned Mr. Burns has four sisters. And it was tolerable. So uh it's okay to have more than one sister.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you. No, like, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just just some general questions. I'm not opposed to moving forward with the proclamation. I just it's it's interesting. I just had some wanted some questions answered. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so consent, Mr. Ritz, you said something, Mr. Davis, you did, Mr. Sweeney, we have your consent. Mr. Burns, we do, as well as you have my own, Mr. Mayor. So yes, please do move, please do move forward on the proclamation.
Okay.
Okay.
If I may, uh yaku you to be.
Meaning?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, very good. All right.
Once that proclamation is official, I want him to brush up on that a little bit.
We'd like the mayor to present in Ukrainian.
Ukrainian.
Yes.
Oh, wait, right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
We now turn to agenda item number eight, review and approval of ordinance twenty two dash zero eight, update to election candidate name posting for consideration. Staff, we turn to you.
Right. Okay, so this is ordinance twenty two oh eight. Um it's a simple change, the ordinance. Um we were listing candidates by alphabetical order uh on the town bulletin board and the town website is when they come in and we just wanted to clarify that we will be ordering them by last name. That's it. No other changes.
Okay, so with that in mind, um any questions for staff related to this item?
Yeah, I couldn't find anywhere in the in the code about ballots. So does that just fall under here too, or can we add the term ballots? Because if we're listing it on our website and on the town bulletin board, I would think that it should follow suit with the ballots as well.
It should. So I can add to like halfway down where it says upon receipt of any certificates, regardless of the type of candidacy by the town clerk, the name of the candidates, therefore, will be posted on the town bulletin board, comma town website and official ballot in alphabetical order by last name.
I I assume that would be okay, because I know our our code has a whole section on absentee ballots and
Yeah.
and all that stuff, so.
And that would capture both of them.
So I just didn't know if we wanted to cover it to be safe.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments related to the proposed ordinance?
No, and if and if we didn't add that tonight, I wasn't gonna vote no without adding it. No, and if and if we didn't add that tonight, I wasn't going to vote no without adding it. I just throwing it out there.
That's fine. No, that's a good point.
So is there a motion to accept ordinance twenty-two dash zero eight as modified?
Still moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Staff, we now turn to you, I believe, for our proposed agenda for our next meeting, September twelfth.
Okay, first, I like to throw out there the workshop related to the Fraley Farm. The date that staff is looking at um, is October twenty-fourth at seven thirty here at the town office. If everybody will check their calendar and get back to me by the end of the week.
Is it Monday?
It is a Monday and then I will coordinate or Zach will coordinate with the town attorney and the representatives of Fraley Farm. So agenda items for September twelfth, the first item would be a proclamation celebrating the one hundred year founding anniversary of Emmitsburg High School for consideration. Second one will be proclamation declaring Lusk, Ukraine, a sister city to the town of Emmitsburg for consideration. Number three, approval of ordinance twenty-two oh nine, update to town code, section eight point twelve point zero four zero, removal of grass and weeds for consideration. Uh, just a note, if approved, this would allow the town to evade violations of this chapter at the expense of the property owner. Such expense would then be chargeable as a lien against the property and collectible in accordance with town code title one. Number four, approval of a Silo Hill Basin retrofit project change order request in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for consideration. This is due to some mandates from the county. And number five, uh, we would like to revisit, review, consider and approve ordinance twenty-two oh five authorizing the imposition of a stormwater management utility fee based on the recommendations and study results of the Environmental Finance Center of the University of Maryland. It would go in effect uh, the end of December, December's uh, water bill. The purpose of the ordinance to authorize a charge of an annual fee based on the amount of impervious surface on publicly and privately owned property in the town for consideration. Yeah, it's the twenty dollars that that um, the board voted on several months ago. That's what I, that's all I have.
So twenty dollar, yep.
The per E R U, when uh, the board voted on the stormwater utility fee. Um, I believe the board set it at twenty dollars per E R U.
Oh, and this is the ordinance to make that official?
Correct, with an or, it has to be adopted with an ordinance.
Got you. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda items as presented for the uh, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two town meeting? So move, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motions been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion related to these agenda items? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Are there any items for administrative business at this time?
No.
No, very good. Okay, so. Sorry? No consent agenda items?
No.
No, very good. Okay, all right. So with that in mind, um, staff, any other items we need to be made aware of at this time?
No.
No, okay. Commissioners, any other items we need to be made aware of this time? None. Um, we have tomorrow night's events. I'm sorry, I'm live, I've lost the name. National night out, yes, okay. Uh, hopefully we'll all see each other there. Okay.
And I believe, uh, real quick, an invitation was extended from Mount St. Mary's to the mayor and board for their grand opening of the health center, correct?
Next week.
Yes, I I reached out to Mr. Faust. I can, I'm going to try to make that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
Second.
Motion is paid by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. The time is nine twenty-five P M.